All right, we have all of this meeting board. We have a public hearing this morning. I guess I do announcements afterwards. So, public hearing today is going to be regarding 2276 Big Eddie Road. We have no people signed up as of right now to speak. We do have the owners of the property in the audience so they can have a chance if they want to, but I have to read this out as by law. So, this public hearing is being convened pursuant to section 890 of the Local Government Act. At this public hearing, the public will be allowed to make representation to council. And all persons present who believe that their interests are affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to be present or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. Those of you who wish to speak concerning this proposed bylaw should commence your address to council and meeting by clearly stating your name and address. Then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the proposed bylaw. Would anyone like to speak to a particular presentation first?
Just very briefly, Your Worship. There's one written submission that was provided by CP expressing a concern, which was also in our original report, about residential development adjacent to the railway. As was noted in the report to council, the subject property is actually not directly adjacent to the railway. However, their guide is of note and is regularly provided by CP whenever there's changes in zoning or OCP adjacent to their right-of-way. Thank you, Worship.
Okay, I'll make a call to the public if anyone would like to speak to this bylaw. Calling a second time. Calling a third time. All right, public hearing portion of this is closed. Do we do different for A and B or that was inclusive of A and B? Yeah, that was both, okay. Announcements from the mayor. So, I am not the mayor. I am standing there right now. Mark is away on vacation. The only announcement that I have to make, although Mark actually speaks to the sewer snow pretty much every meeting, so I'll speak to that. I think we've got an address. Everything's been stalled and has it right now. The smell has subsided, so that's a win on our side, I think. So, we'll cross our fingers that continues to, the smell keeps abated. And then, the second thing that's kind of really exciting is that, and mostly exciting for, well, the town in general, but Graham as well, because Graham's been the acting CAO for, how long?
About six months, Worship.
Six months, yeah. So, thanks for stepping in there. Alan Chabot is going to start as of the 17th of August. So, that's exciting. We welcome him and look forward to his leadership. And we have been a CAO for six months, but Graham did do a good job in the absence of a CAO. So, that's the only announcements that I have. So, we'll look for someone to move to adopt the agenda of Trevor. Counselor English, Counselor Brothers, second, all in favor. And look to adopt the minutes from the regular council meeting of June 9, 2015. Counselor English, second, Counselor Schultz, all in favor. Business arising from the minutes. Do we have any business arising from the minutes? No? Okay. Moving forward, we have two delegates today. One from DC Transit, Ryan Little, and then we'll have the delegates of the adventure parks speak afterwards. So, Ryan.
All right, thanks for being here today. So, as your new counsel, worshiping over a DC Transit shared services model, how it works, how funding works, and I'll be back again in camera session talking about your local transit contract. And so, when I go through this, just stop me if you want more information or more time to read anything on the slides. So, what my role is, is I am the main contact for Alan, your local staff, to at DC Transit. And so, I help him answer your questions to him. I work with our internal departments to get the information requested. Me also manage the local contract here with Lyndon. And we deal with the negotiations, the operations of the local system, and we also work with planning to make any changes to your system as required. So, DC Transit, it's an overview of what we do throughout the province. Over 50 million trips, a fleet of over 1,000 buses, which we share throughout the province. So, a vehicle that's used here might have been previously used in another community. We have an operating budget of over $32 million, including capital. Over 130 communities around the province have transit and, 81 transit systems, so there's multiple communities that make up a transit system. 50 local partners, and then we have 18 private operating companies, five public and 14 nonprofits. So, DC Transit, we don't ourselves, the bus drivers in the community around the province, excluding Victoria, are contracted out. So, this is an overview of how our shared services model works. Local government is up as what you guys are responsible for. So, the top over talks about your transport priorities and routes. So, we work with you on that. So, if you have an interest in getting service to a certain area of your community or more service, we'll provide information to help you make those decisions. You set service levels, approve budgets, you set your fare, and then obviously tax appropriately to fund it. So, these trends that we provide the capital and operating, we cost sharing that, we work with the province to get that funding. And that's the main part of it. And our capital, as we mentioned before, a fleet of over 1,000. And we rotate those vehicles around the province as the vehicle here breaks down for a long period of time, we can get a vehicle from another community to support yours. This is some of the benefits of our shared services model. So, comparatively across Canada, we have higher passengers per hour, lower operating costs per service hour, lower operating costs per passenger. And some of the reasons why is that since we run the province and not them in isolation, we save money on fuel, the local purchases, contracts. Certain communities, we group them with other local communities when we do our RFPs to make it more attractive to the properties to get on. So, your system has been around since November 1985. About 6,000 service hours annually, almost 25,000 trips. That works at the level just for four rides per service hour. We have three buses in service during the weekday. We have one bus that acts like a spare. Vehicles need to come in the shop for maintenance or they're down and may show issues. And we have to figure out your commuter trip. And there's also two other trips that go to, one to Campbell's and one to Kona. That's funded by the Interior Department. And Lyndon Enterprises is the local property company. So, conventional transit, this is just the main service that runs through your town that's on a set route and set schedule. You also have the custom transit, which is door-to-door service for people that meet certain eligibility requirements. And then, paratransit is what you guys are classified as, and in your case, it's really just a mix of the two services above. So, we have a conventional transit component and a custom. And at the bottom there, we have our valid connections. Those are the two days of service to Campbell's. And then, your service hours are on the right there. Most of your routes operate from about 7:00 in the morning to 6:00 in the evening, and also on Saturday, 8:45 to 6:00. So, it's their cost sharing. So, typically, we fund, or you guys fund about 53% of the fixed service. Okay, that's the, on a scheduled certain route. Custom is the door-to-door one, which you fund at a much lower percentage because that service is a lot more expensive to operate, serves a different need, and you collect, you retain 100% of the revenues. And down below is just what your most recent budget looked like. So, $614,000 total cost, your local share of that is about $250,000. And that's just including what we have captured in our budget. Yours may have included different items. And so, we were here a few years ago. We did a service review. And what came out of that review was increased frequency. So, we added additional bus, which cut trip times down by about half so people can get to their destinations and back in a short period of time. And that was a 350 of service hours. And so, part of the guide documents are service review that's due to be updated in the next year or two. And that, again, will help give you the information you need to either expand your service or potentially look at reducing service if that's for your community to have information there like the rides for our expected ridership and cost recovery. And the service performance measures, we don't really have any established in your community today. It's something we're trying to push, but it's kind of difficult to do. And basically, the main goal is to, say, if you have a route that's not meeting X rides per hour or it's costing X dollars, that you should either potentially reinvest those hours into another route that's performing better, or in other words, the route's performing very well, that you should go hit a point where it's, you want to invest more money into that route because it's performing well and serving the needs of the community. So, our annual calendar year looks like from the high level. So, we are just past the annual operating agreement, which we run from April to March. What's coming up, basically, by the end of this month, we'll have our annual performance summary, which is, they'll give you your year-over-year variables for your ridership, your costs, cost recovery. I have some information on that to date, but it's not all finalized yet. There's some information I have for your ridership compared to last year. And then, all of this, we have our transit initiative program, which is an opportunity to expand service. And then, we have a three-year budget that's coming up towards the end of the year. Annually, we have a workshop. We just had one in Harrison. Next year, it's going to be in this third of June. And all local government staff and elected officials are invited to that, as well as our operating companies. And it is a few-day workshop where we get feedback from you guys to help guide our operations and policies and procedures. We also attend the Local Government Association meetings, I think, and so do this year though, UBCM wrapped. And we're also available for any time you guys want us to come up here. So, with this presentation today, if you have questions about your performance in your community, which that report will be going to Alan in the next coming weeks, I can assist with that as well. Let's skip through these last few there. Just what you can do to help support it. One of the main ones is if you're approving new developments or new houses that, if transit is something that you're thinking you want in an area, let us know as soon as possible so we can work with that to make sure it suits getting transit service there. If you guys have any questions like these, the typical ones you guys may be getting as elected officials, we can definitely do over them. But these are some of the more popular ones we do here. The one is where the buses are running, and that is probably a big one. And the main reason for that is we have our peak periods of times in the morning and evenings, we move between framework. And the other times and sizes of periods, the capacity of those vehicles is maxed. So, we're getting usually more in commuter times and off-vehicle times. The vehicles resolve, likely a few people on the bus. So, that is it. So, if you guys have any other questions or have more questions about how the model works, I can ask them right now. I get all the feedback later too.
Questions from council? Thank you very much, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Our next presenter is Revelstoke Adventure Park.
Hello, if you don't know me, my name is Jason Rowe. This is our second time around for this project. Some of you may not be aware of it, but in 2012, we submitted this application to the province, which was denied. We're recently in this application in the middle of July, approximately two to three weeks. The purpose today is to sort of give you an update on what we've done since the last application and also have you take a look at some of the new things that we are proposing in the application. A little handy tool here. This is an overview map of the boundaries of the proposed tenure that we are applying for the province. In red is the crown land portion of the property. And the green metals area in the, where's the agricultural land reserve, is a private area of the property. A lot of this property does overlap the existing tenure with Revelstoke Mountain Resort and also their resorts, sort of reserve area for expansion if they decided to fund their passion development. We do, in this application, have removed a large section of the tenure. If you look at the right-hand side, we've removed that area, which is in the previous map and application. We removed this area for, to sort of aside with the concern of the watershed and its proximity. Although we were 300 to 400 meters away from the watershed boundary, we thought that this piece of area would be too difficult to develop, but also help us remove us to an area much further away from the watershed. I will be touching on the watershed later in the presentation with more detail. This is just an overall sort of area of human understanding that where each adventure sort of zones we have. At the top of the bluff, which is the 50 meters above, you know, that's 50 meters above base elevation, is our bungee center. And you'll see some photos following that as we go along. At the bungee center, we'll have a restaurant, a viewing platform, obviously washing facilities, the bungee jump, sky swing, a start to one of the longest zip lines in North America. Also, the start for your biking, your zip line area, and the bike zone in yellow, those aren't definitive trails as of yet, but the bike area takes up most of the property and inner mine with the zip line area, as well as the tree top adventure. We also plan for a 200-site campground near the base. And we're proposing to build a substantially 12 to 15 acre lake on the property. And then, the green metals portion, you'll see we are leaving that for open space for events, either sporting or amusing or Top Model races or some more activities we can bring, which increase the number of visitors to Revelstoke as well as to the property. So, green metals, we have planned for the lake and possible first of its kind in North America, actual electric hydraulic-driven wave pool. So, it's actually in the lake, it's not a wave pool, you see the wave park. It's actually light surfing and actual waves in the ocean, except it's mechanically driven. A lot in the lake would also be, you know, lakes can not be very deep, so it'll be warmer. Also have an area for swimming and bathing and beaches. We're moving to the tree top adventure area, which will have tree top corces and suspension bridges and other light-minded activities for, from all levels, from children to very difficult. And then, we have a zip line area, which is an area that is, you start at the top and you can zip line down all the way to the bottom. And you'll have choices of a two-hour tour, an hour-and-a-half tour, or an hour tour, or you can do some faster, more direct lines down and be over in 20 minutes. So, we allow people that want to do longer, more intense activities can do so. The lift axis bike area, as you saw on the previous map, is going to encompass most of the property. And we hope to grow that through the phase of the development and adding more runs on a yearly basis to encompass the entire 600-plus acres of land that we're going to be operating on. The bungee center itself, this is just a good idea of the view up towards Albert Canyon, the deck off the building, you'll be able to watch bungee jump and the, starting to make the big zip line and other activities, as well as have somebody to eat or bring out a picnic. This is just another view of the bungee center, look ahead on Revelstoke. If you look back to Revelstoke Mountain, and you'll have some, there'll be several interpretive boards about the area and history of Revelstoke. Again, some more shots provided by Royal Mountain. To this stage, we have been disallowed by the province and were requested by the province to apply for an investigation permit so that we could do more studies and mitigate the issues of the disallowance. So, so far, we did have the investigation permit granted to us. And the Agricultural Land Reserve non-farm use was one of the disallowance reasons for disallowance. The Agricultural Land Reserve Commission granted us non-farm use for the purposes of the adventure tourism application. So, we, it took a number of years, but they gave us a very clean approval to allow us to operate as planned in the permit, for the adventure tourism permit. CP Rail, which was an issue that came up, the crossing, it was deemed that we should be making a public crossing, and it became a difficult thing to do. But after, we'll further talk to CP Rail, we determined that it should remain private and be a controlled crossing like the one at Canoe, which is just for, for our, the canoe, canoe middle, actually own that crossing, they control it. They pay for the lights and safety arms together. And we would phase ourselves into doing the same thing. In the process, right now, we have a water license in for consumption as well as hydraulic power, a commercial access permit from the Ministry of Transportation. And we will be very close timing to this application, putting in a zoning and OCP amendment for the CSRB to allow us to have resort, commercial land use with a comprehensive development zone in zoning that would be based around the application. So, all the permitted uses that we are applying for, by the province, will then be rezoned to allow us to do so on the property. A number of phases we've completed prior to the disallowance, but also several since the disallowance that we're required. A wildlife assessment was requested by the Tenaha First Nations Council. We used a local environmental professional, Giles Shearing, who completed the assessment. And out of the assessment, there was no major issues with any wildlife threat or intringing or negative impact from it in a sense. So, we completed trap study from the Minister of Transportation's request. We did a bridge inspection review of the one-lane bridge across the La Sola River. The bridge and trap study have come out positive. They have just been completed, actually the bridge was yesterday completed, and it was a positive report from engineers and from the Ministry of Transportation. Previous to this application, we did an archaeological assessment, which found that there was no major archaeological concerns, and that was done by the Spotsy First Nation. They're based out under me. I spoke about the CPU crossing already. We did have a terrain stability assessment for our three-kilometer road going to the bungee center. There was some concern with this assessment due to some typos from the engineer on site, which made it look like we were putting a road by Greeley Creek, not the unnamed creek, which is in the property, which is two kilometers away. So, that's been taken care of and changed to show that there is no effect of Greeley Creek whatsoever. We also did a preliminary geotech report on the bluff to make sure that we were able to build a building up there and not have, in the safest possible manner, as well as our bungee bridge and our viewing deck. The report from that has been very good. Obviously, we need to do a more detailed one when we come to construction in order to pass the, obviously, the safety, if you can imagine, being up on the foot to the concerns that would come up on that point. A wildfire study was requested, and we had that completed by Simon Hung, who also did the city fall fire study. All three of the threat prevention guidelines was completed, and it's going to be part of this new application. And then, we also went further because of the watershed issue that came up last time and did a watershed assessment. We had Giles Shearing from Shearing Environmental do a watershed assessment on the property. As you can see, in the gray is the watershed area, is the actual boundary. The closest point we are to the boundary is 427 meters. The intensive use area, which is on the left-hand side of the map, on the left-hand side of that unnamed creek you see, is over two kilometers away from the watershed boundary. So, with the findings of the study, you know, the natural topography of the area is a natural fencing to keep people out of the area, but also the distance travel, people don't go off a commercially bike path and try to cut through two kilometers of forest to hit into the boundary. So, we've sort of made sure that we have clearly defined that there is no watershed issue. I did invite Mike Thomas from the city, as well as interior help, to the property to explain to them, it's much more easy to do so on-site, where the watershed was in comparison to our property and where our intensive usage is. And both of them were satisfied that there was no issue with the watershed. This is again, an overall, give them some more detail of the zip line course on the property, the bungee center, Falls Lake, our tree top adventure, our campground. The purpose of today's meeting was also not only to give you an update of where we are, that you know that we are going to be putting this application in, but also we need to get some support from the city and its council to the project moving forward, and we can conclude with our application for the province. And I have had a few of the councilors, as well as the mayor, to the site, and I'm invited the other councilors, and I haven't reached out to either on this side of the table yet, but we will be out before the application goes in. I'd like to take you out there to hand on if you, for other councilors, people I'm available all the time for information or one-on-one if you need more information. Any questions?
Can I just ask about the lake? How is the lake going to be? I guess it's a man-made lake? How is it?
Yeah, so it has to be designed by an engineer and alongside with an environmental professional. So, it is, we have a license that will allow us to take water from the unnamed creek that will feed into the lake. This is a very, this is a non-engineering way, in very simple terms. So, the lake will have to be flowing at all times, but it'll feed the lake from the existing water flow and then redirect it out into another creek, existing creek or ditch, that will then go back into the La Sola at some point. And so, it's not a simple design. It is engineered. There's requirements from the environment, the Environment Canada, to how you have new shores, what type of natural shoreline is there, how much of that you need. It's not as simple as taking a hole and just flowing the water. It's a substantial undertaking. Any other questions?
Yeah, so I have a question. This is pretty exciting from a, not my time as mayor here. So, previous back on the way according to things. It's a previous background, good recording and things like that. I know I bring a lot of people to Resto. What are you thinking as far as numbers, staffing, and people that it would attract?
We think if we'll build out, you're going to add at least enough a hundred thousand visitors to Resto in the summertime. The problem, as most of you know, is that Resto has twice as many cars coming through here in the summertime. But there's no direct correlation, but hotel stays increasing, they actually, they don't. We need to make this more of a destination. This is the type of place that will attract that two, three night stay, if not more. We're looking at two hundred-plus jobs, that's just in operations. We're not including the jobs and the economic impact that the construction will have. And construction will be over a six-year period, so it doesn't, we don't start construction and then open and then stop. There's going to be a continuous build of the project. The economic impact, we're going to be coming out with one, we released before the project was in, a more detailed economic impact to Resto. But we do see that we could really make a big difference and help you in Resto to that for season's regard.
If you were to look at blue sky and say everything, this, I mean, you have some challenges thus far, but if everything from here went well, what's your guys' targeted date?
So if everything went well, obviously, the province has a hundred fifty days to review the project. We've got it back to council and other agencies that are involved. And everything went smoothly, it got through, we would hope to do some road and planning construct, like road construction, and then detailed planning of the village, actual precise layout of the zip line during this fall/winter. Begin full construction, basically, middle of March if we can. And try for a soft opening, for a local soft opening in the fall. And then a full open in two thousand seventeen with a grand opening. And then, you know, try to highly do a major event that we work on with the city to do a music event or some sort of adventure event, bike race. We talked to the resort about doing a major bike race that would, and this is on top of park, we're working with trying to get events to continually part as part of the park area. We have a lot of great land, almost a hundred acres of dead flat land we use for events. We're talking about the idea of a bike race that would start at the resort. It's a twenty-four-thousand-foot climb and descent bike race. And we've won it, there's one in the states, I just lost it in, but about ten thousand people go to it. And we think that would be, we could build on that over the years and maybe into one of the more meritorious bike races.
Councillors, anyone else have any other question?
I just want to say, I'm excited about it too. I say the same thing as Scott. You know, I know how committed you are to the community and your family and everything else. And I appreciate the fact you've taken all the steps that really are good steps to make sure that it's a good, solid site. So I'm excited about it, especially since I'm sort of in the economic development area on this council. And I'm really hopeful that it can do some good things for Resto.
Yeah, again, Jason, through, through, yeah, to your worship. I've had an opportunity to follow this in a lot of detail over the years and understand it and sort of the challenges that have happened. And I guess that's my main question right now is, from your perspective, at this point in time, as you're getting ready to file your application in July, what are the big hurdles still in front of you with the big challenges?
To be honest, we feel that we've worked hard over the last two years and spent a lot of time writing and studying that we think we've mitigated all of the issues, even the ones that we're well on our, we feel that we've gone over and above what was required. We wanted to show the province and the other agencies when they got this new application that they've seen that we've taken the even bigger step to providing a very professional, thorough application that deals with not just things that they brought up on the big reasons, but other things that we did that are requirements, once approved, what we did in the form of our risk analysis, we did that now. And usually, they would say, well, you can do that after, it's what we've done. Because they, we had talks with the province, they said, well, what's your risk analysis for the property? Can you give us a slide over? And we then did a full risk analysis, so that they would have that on their desk prior to the approval or disapproval of the approval. And so we continue on stuff like that, taking the extra step, really taking our time to hand this application and not rush it in. We wanted to have it in months ago, but there's been a reason for delay. We want, we didn't feel that putting it in at that point was the right thing to do. And we were happy to bump it if the application we were going to commit, you know, July tenth, let's say. But if we feel that we need to find more information, then we're happy, we'd rather take two more weeks and get an excellent application than miss one. I think we've done that of every aspect of it.
Thank you very much, Jason, thanks for the work you put into this. And the councillor that happened to have there, I would say they'd take you up in your request to see the vision. It's pretty fantastic. All right, so any old business? Moving on to new business.
So nine A, I move that the 2014 annual report be received. You are a staffer, has been moved. Any discussion? Just some background information, this has been out to the public, everyone's had a chance to see it. One of the, if anyone hasn't had an opportunity to read through it, some of the projections from 2016 in there, we could sort of, call it a little spoken at some of the categories that were going to be referenced, so it's sort of a viable way of seeing some things that are going to happen in the future. But other than that, it's our annual report.
Okay, so all in favor of receiving their report? Con, do you want to add, Tom or Councillor Brothers?
Yes. Move that the development variance permit application submitted by Nora Collier and Cindy Del Maron to property at lot sixteen, Plan 11043, four hundred Moss Street, to vary zoning by law number 1264, section five point one two, bracket C, to increase the permitted projection of an open canopy into the required front yard setback area from point seven five meters to two point two six meters, be approved, subject to the following condition. The site plan elevations and photos are to be included with the development variance permit of Schedule A and that corporate officer be authorized to issue the development variance permit once the above given conditions have been satisfied.
Moved by councillor Brothers. Seconded by councillor Sells, Chris's presentation.
Thank you, Your Worship. The subject property is located at four eleven Moss Street. As stated by councillor Brothers, the applicant has applied for a development variance permit to sanction the setting of the constructed snow roof and carport on the front of the existing single-family dwelling. Some image of the single-family dwelling before the addition. The encroachment was discovered upon completion of the building location certificate prior to final occupancy and closure of the building permit. As the constructed snow roof and carport only approaches a further point six one meters from the single-family dwelling and will not have any significant impact on the neighboring properties, the proposed variance is considered minor in nature. Given the minor nature of the variance, the improvements of the durability and functionality of the single-family dwelling and improvements, and the improved aesthetic appearance, staff's recommendation is for approval of the resolution as read by councillor Brothers.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, does anybody oppose? Passes.
And nine C, that the city not proceed with development and an access to the Columbia River at the requested location on Colback Road at this time. No matter response letter we sent to the neighborhood residents who made the request, providing the following reasons for not proceeding with the development and requested access at this time. The proposed access point is located at a point where the road elevation is significantly higher than the river edge. Access development would require excavation and site modification for the trailer with switchbacks or the construction of the stairway. The cost to develop the proposed access would likely exceed twenty thousand dollars. Approximately one hundred and fifty meters to the south of the proposed access location is an access road to a city park, which includes a parking area, tennis court, hockey, lacrosse area, and access to the Columbia River.
Moved by councillor Sells. Seconded by councillor Brothers.
Worship, as noted in the report, there's a request from a neighbor to look at an access point located here on Colback Road. As far as providing or developing it to allow for the public to be able to get access to the lake, or sorry, to the river at this point. However, you can note that the topography is very limiting at this location. The road is beginning to rise and uphill, and at the same time, there's a driveway that's also rising. It would be necessary to do a series of switchbacks or stairs through this area of current forest in order to construct this. Just down the roadway, there is a park, which has a uniform trail. This is the trail that runs along the side of the cross area. And runs all the way down to the sandbar that the individual was looking for access for. So this, the access that's proposed comes out on this end of the bar, whereas the access from the park or the tennis court is, comes out on this side of the bar. So therefore, staff would recommend that council not proceed with developing another access at this point in time. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you, Dean. Councillor Brothers?
Was there a particular reason why the person who asked the access wanted it at that location? Was there something magical to that, or?
There's a number of road access points. So it was identified as being a public roadway, really, it's without shows on our mapping system. And we have fifty-four of those. So they're scattered throughout the canyon. So they, when they found that this was a public roadway, they're requiring essentially just to be able to use it as such. Unfortunately, just because a road driveway exists, doesn't mean that it's developed for access. So we have lanes and roads around the community that haven't been developed for that purpose. So really, the public isn't invited to use that area until it's developed in a safe and effective manner. This particular piece, you couldn't directly use our regular to access the river without something having to construct in some form a staircase or a trail.
And no one is using it just without, without permission of the access? It's not being used currently?
It is, the adjacent property owner has a driveway and a carport structure on our roadway. We may be addressing that as she said.
Yeah, thank you, Dean. This came forward to our planning group as well. And Dean does a really good job of kind of dancing and being very correct about it. The individual was looking for, to be able to get personal access to have coffee in the morning and relax by the river and that kind of thing. So it was really good, he just opened us looking out for different access points. But the one down the river is just as useful. So all in favor of the motion? Against? Motion passes. Nine C. Or nine D, sorry.
S nine D, I move that request from Big Ben Development Corporation for an official community plan amendment to re-designate lots one, two, three, four, five, and five A, Plan seven, six, five, nine, zero, three, Feral Road from T five O High Street mixed use to T five L urban residential reconsider.
Moved by councillor Orlando. Seconded by councillor English. Dean?
Very briefly, Worship, the subject properties are located on the other side of the CPR tracks from downtown. The subject properties were part of an application last year from Mount Bailey Brewery. Unfortunately, the property did not work out by purpose. The property owner is now asked to have the property re-designated back to its original designation. It was originally designated T five L. Through that process, last year, it was re-designated to T five O. They've asked for it to go back. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you. Discussion? So I, you've got with the developer on this, and really, he's just looking to have the lot go back to how it was before. All in favor of this motion? Oppose? Passes.
Nine E, Worship, I move that the provincial Ministry of Community Scored and Cultural Development's Administration report dated May twenty fifteen, twenty fifteen be received. And that the process be continued as outlined in the provincial report for the request from David Evans and Shelley Sharp for municipal boundary extension to annex Law one, Plan one, 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 seven, seven, section twelve, Township twenty-three, Range two, west of the sixth Meridian, Coody District into the city of Resto. Moved by councillor English. Seconded by councillor Sells. Dean?
Thank you, Worship. The subject property made an annexation application, which is first presented to the council all over a year ago now. Most of your half looks given. The process, it can be quite lengthy. This particular process got hung up in Victoria for quite a long period of time before this report was prepared. There's some changes in staff in Victoria that caused us to sit on the side burner for quite some time. We've now received the report with instructions on how to proceed. So we're seeking the council's permission to continue with that process due to appropriate advertising, as well as the reverse polling for city residents. Thank you, Worship.
Discussion, councillor Brothers?
The only thing I don't understand, and then just to strike him, it's just I don't understand the process. It says it needs the approval of the electorate as a precondition. How does that work?
There's two ways you can do it. One is to do it as a referendum. Or you can do it as a negative referendum, so people have to vote against it. You have to get about ten percent of the electorate to vote against it. So it has to be appropriately advertised, and people have the opportunity to come in and vote against the application.
And do we get to choose which way you want to do it?
This process, we recommend for administration would be to do it that way. You could go to a full referendum in the county, however, that process is quite a bit more costly. Normally, what we'll see is, is a county will try it this way first. If it's unsuccessful, we saw that in Lake Country with the railway board. It was unsuccessful in this format, they didn't get ten percent of the electorate to vote against it. So they have to go through the referendum process in order to proceed. It's quite a bit more costly to do that, so we're willing to carry through in this format.
Just out of curiosity, if you do go through the referendum process, who pays for that?
We do.
The city does?
Councillor May, I would just ask through your act of worship, just for some of the area based on that question. It's my understanding that in due course, it would be to do a counter petition as a start, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
There'll be a separate report coming from the administration on the actual counter petition process. This is just naming the process.
Yep.
Allowing the council to receive the report and seeking instruction to go through that process and paring those ads and that process.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Nine F, Economic Development. No? Oh, I have an old. I could look after it. Nine F, that the proposed amended amendment to heritage alteration permit twenty fifteen dash oh two submitted by Todd Kirsten, happening alone for the properties, parcel A of Lot four and Lot five, Plan six, three, six, B, two, oh, nine, to the street east, to modify the accessory building roof structure, windows, access door, and the height of the rear mudroom deck canopy. Roof be approved, subject to the following condition. The amended building design drawings and site plan are to be included. The amended building design drawings and site plan are to be included with the heritage alteration permit as Schedule A, and that the corporate officer be authorized to amend H A P two zero one five dash zero two once the above noted condition has been satisfied. Moved by councillor English. Seconded by councillor Sells. Chris, the presentation?
Thank you, your worship. The subject property is located to and I, the street east. As stated by councillor English, the applicant has requested to amend or approve heritage alteration permit number two thousand fifteen dash oh two. The amendments proposed consist of changes to the accessory building roof structure, windows, access door, and the height of the rear mudroom deck canopy roof. As the Heritage Commission was unable to make a quorum prior to the amendments going forward to council, and given the minor nature of the proposed changes, staff queried the Heritage Commission members' emails with regards to the individual support of the proposed amendments. As of today, five of the eight Heritage Commission members have emailed in support of the proposed changes. Staff recommendation is for approval of the resolution as read by councillor English.
Discussion. I think there's a, it's not that much different than what we looked at before.
So you can see from top to bottom on all these figures, there's the old version on the bottom and the new version, amended, proposed version on the top.
All in favor? Oppose? Passes.
Hope you do this, your worship, Dean.
Yep.
Um, we moved a letter to be written to D.C. Hydro to request funding to pay for additional enforcement services in the upper arrow ground of the drawdown zone.
Moved by councillor Brothers. Seconded by councillor English, especially. I'll speak to this one a little bit, uh, 'cause, yeah, I'm gonna phrase this properly. I, because it's outside of city boundaries and because the next age that's coming up is, that motion also addresses a similar issue, I'm wondering if for this one, we can just say that we support what came through in CSRD, or we should actually be requesting Hydro, money from Hydro, since that's outside city limits. That's my point for this one. I'll reveal on that.
What's the nature of the funding that we're asking? I'm not too sure exactly what we're asking for. We're asking for additional enforcement services funding for that. I mean, what does that entail? What are we talking about?
I think they would use it for, um, a commissioner of the Department of Police.
Well, I think maybe it is traditional R C M P enforcement services down there, and maybe it is traditional conservation officer services down there. At the moment, neither agency have the capacity or the resources to enforce infractions down there at the moment, so, um, this has been a longstanding issue at Hydro with, I think there's some current responsibility for it, and I know the stakeholders over the years have complained to Hydro, and I'm very frustrated that nothing's happened, which is why I think they're approaching local government for some support as well.
Just follow up through the chair. Are we asking them to make the decision as to what the appropriate funding is? I mean, how are we gonna phrase this?
I think, first of all, we'd have to agree to the matter again, the negotiation process with the regulatory bodies, the province, because the province owns some land out there as well as I, which is, CSRD, so I think we get it in the table, it's nice to be present. What would additional enforcement like that there come as time comes?
You know, I don't want to jump ahead to the next agenda, but you know, just as background, when you start reading some of the correspondence that's going back and forth, and as far as to some of the background here, um, it gets really complex really quickly, and whose jurisdiction is what, especially if that starts to spin. That, I guess, that is my concern, is, you know, we have a general request for funding, which is great, and I support that concept if, you know, that is council's direction, but it's how do we hammer that out? And you know, I'm just, my concern is we're gonna wind up with a whole bunch of more letters that look like that, and it's still not getting clear, so, um, I'm willing to support the concept. It's not a hundred percent clear how we're gonna work that out, and my concern is that's gonna take us a lot of effort to, on our part, it can be, I mean, a lot of things possibly around. I don't know if Alan wants to.
The only additional piece of information I have is that the CSRD wrote the letter which you have a copy of to D.C. Hydro about a month ago. I just saw the response today, I just came in, which, they said that Hydro would not be willing to provide funding for this purpose, which doesn't mean we can't write again, just reinforce that, that Hydro's position at the moment is that they would not provide funding for this.
Councillor Brothers?
Well, then, to his worship's point, should we not sort of just write a letter basically saying that we support the CSRD position and move forward in that? I'm just a little confused as to what we're gonna say in the letter, what we're asking for exactly, you know?
I think, I thought the letter, that we were writing, we were writing similar to the one that came from the CSRD, just playing the same issues, affects our local residents. The residents are complaining to us, and we don't have any jurisdiction there, so, I think asking them to provide funding for additional enforcement is, is a solution for this issue.
Your worship, the motion before us is written in a way that it's asking us to regular to D.C. Hydro to request funding, not to just support the CSRD, so we have to deal with this issue first.
I'll just make this a suggestion. I think one of the councillors mentioned it. It might be a good idea to deal with the next issue first, because of the next issue, we're asking Hydro to reconvene the committee, which is not a big financial commitment for Hydro. And really, that committee is the body that should be trying to resolve the issues down there. So maybe we want to take a run at that first and see if, and then three months or six months to know if the problem hasn't been resolved, which I'd be surprised if it has. Um, we could go back to Hydro and say, we reconvene the committee, give you these issues. Nothing is approved, so we'd like to, we think additional enforcement would be, that's just a suggestion.
Yeah, that suggestion I agree, I can agree with, and that's what I was saying previous, Alan, is that if we get this committee reconvene, then that, the issues may resolve themselves. It may take longer than we think, but at least it's being looked at, because I don't think it's, I personally don't think it's something we should ask directly of Hydro for funding, but.
So motion?
We still motion. Yeah, yeah. So, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Shot down tonight, but it's a motion. defeated.
Well, you got one.
We don't have that many, like. Okay.
Of the reach.
Yeah.
Um, that a letter be written to D.C. Hydro to request that D.C. Hydro reconvene the upper arrow drawdown zone advisory committee to deal with issues relating to activities in the upper arrow drawdown zone.
Moved by councillor Brothers, seconded by councillor English. Discussion.
I think this is a good thing to do, and I think it's the right step to take.
I approve all these comments, I think it's the right way. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
I am I. I make a motion that grants me fifteen hundred dollars to Rebelstoke Minor Hockey, and that this grant take the form of a credit to be used against facility rental fees and has no cash value.
Moved by councillor Sells, seconded by councillor English. Discussion.
Councillor Allen? Um, if I could, uh, through the chair, ask, what is our policy on the finance committee in terms of annual schedules? Is my understanding is had a deadline? Annual deadline?
So, your worship, yes, or is it an annual deadline that is completely deflected each year? So this was a request that came in late. However, in the past, council has, it's on policy, so to speak, and the law can't make funding in the course of the year, as applications come in that weren't received at the deadline.
Your worship, I'll just speak to that as I'm on the finance committee. We have this issue come up, and as Rebelstoke Minor Hockey's having hard enough time to make a go of it, they are making a bit of profit. They did all due diligence as far as giving all their records that they need to give for the finance committee, and so we could have an actual look at this. This does not have any cash value, but it does get the kids out on the ice during the summer, so I would support this.
All right, all in favor? Oppose? Motion passes.
Jay Finance, I make a motion that this report on the two thousand sixteen to two thousand and twenty financial plan process be received.
Moved by councillor Sells. Seconded by councillor English. Discussion. Councillor Allen?
Yeah, I think, you know, everyone on, well, more or less everyone in council is voting in favor of moving this timeline up. I guess, uh, I would just request a little bit more information. There's been heads up from staff on what we, what we'll need to be doing, or just general comments on what we need to be doing to get ready for this, and other types of implications.
So, your worship, thank you, yes, this is a suggested timeline, so there's certain kind of these flexibility built into it to be fulfilled, and how those processes take place, and the availability of staff and captures, like. So we had a draft financial plan based on the end of September last year, so, um, seeing to a reasonable, you can't continue with that process and hopefully it plays, maybe it's attended this year. However, it is a very ambitious time scale, they could detect that, say, for someone, so it'll need some, certain affordability to take together.
And I just have to say, reiterating, I said several, several things. Thank you very much, Graham, for doing this and for setting these targets for us, because I think you gotta have targets and work toward the targets. They are, they are ambitious, but I think, I think we can do the job, so.
All right. All in favor? Oppose? Motion passes.
Thank you, your worship. By Nicky, that an exemption to bylaw seventeen seventy-two dash five point oh open burning be granted to Mount Baybee Brewing Oak in relation to the wood waste debris pile off Oak Drive. I'm quite certain.
I still move by councillor English, seconded?
Yeah. I would like to speak to this. I'm quite certain, I'm quite certain that my prior chief has done his due diligence and had a look at the file, and this is gonna help me, not making you forward, and I'm excited to vote that supporting this.
Great. Another discussion. All in favor? Oppose? Motion passes.
Thank you. I'll continue, your worship, that the revised Rebelstoke in Area Community Wildfire Protection Plan be approved?
Motion, councillor English, seconded by councillor Sells. Discussion. Councillor English?
I have been sitting on this wildfire protection plan committee, and the body of work that's gone into this is absolutely fantastic. Rebelstoke has been well ahead of the curve in relation to wildfire protection. They've been working in some form since two thousand and six. The body of work that's here is absolutely outstanding, and Rebelstoke is very well positioned to weather what could possibly be a fire season this year. Just really, really great committee, really, really great work coming out of this committee. Really, really happy to be supported this morning.
Councillor Brothers?
I just have to say as well, much to my surprise, I read the whole thing, and I was very, very impressed with how well it's done and how it covers everything, and let me tell you, as a citizen, especially in this season when we're all worried about wildfires, I feel a little bit more comforted by the fact that this job has been done, so kudos to that committee.
Excellent. Cynthia Lee, you did a lot of work on that?
Archie McConkey and Bruce Block, both on the book.
Fantastic, thank you. Made a page turner for Connie. Well done, thank you very much. All in favor? Passes. Uh, sorry, opposed? Motion passes.
All right. Item nine M. I move that EPR Construction Limited awarded a tender for the Cobach Park washroom building in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Moved by councillor Orlando. Seconded by councillor Brothers.
And I'll just speak to it really quickly. It's straight up the middle tender process, which we did, and for the planned washroom in Cobach Park.
Any comments? All right, all in favor? Oppose? Motion passes. Yes, I can do this. Let's read this. Okay.
Ten A. I move that the letter from the Ministry of Forests, Lands and Natural Resources, dated June first, two thousand and fifteen, be received for information.
Moved by councillor Sells. First, seconded. Councillor Brothers? Discussion.
Um, I have to say, I read this letter, and I'm very grateful that Minister Thompson did in fact respond, and, but I'm a little, I'm a little uncertain as to, as to exactly what he is suggesting is the next process. I think, from our perspective, we were hopeful that we would engage the ministry and the minister to, to, to sort of get the groups together and be some facilitator of that of that sort, and I'm not too sure whether this is what is being suggested to us, or whatever. So I'm a little, I'm a little uncertain, and I know that Mayor Key wants to proceed with, was moving forward with this as quickly as possible, and perhaps he'll have some comments with respect to this letter when he's, he returns, and I don't know whether we should defer and put this back on to the next council meeting, so he can make some comments as well. There was some suggestion that he would tend in Victoria to speak to the minister, and I think, you know, without his input, we need some input from there, and keep.
Councillor?
Councillor Allen? Yeah, I do echo many of councillor Brothers' statements. You know, it's just an open-ended letter. It seems to point to the way the existing process in terms of forest consultation, as I understand it, how goes, and that they collect information in the end, or left with something that is yet predetermined, and from the start, I think the community is looking for heights and planning this area to have some sort of a plan, so I don't think this response gets the community where we want to go, and I'd like to move forward with continued discussion, but I do agree with councillor Brothers that it would be good to, to have the mayor be part of that discussion at the table here, because as councillor Brother mentioned, there's no option for him to vote for that, and I don't know if it would be able to react to that, and to put forward a request to staff to take a look at this discussion and bring forth at the next council meeting with some recommendations for options.
So this motion, do we need to defeat it and then, or do we need to defeat it to table it, or can we table it until next?
Your worship, we still have to receive the letter.
Yep. So just receive it.
Just receive it this time, if there's not motion until the next session.
I think, sorry.
Then I'd like to make a motion that we, we put this over for further discussion at the next council meeting.
So we receive it at the next council meeting?
I'll second. Second. Councillor.
Sorry, your worship, is that motion?
Yes.
Yep, yeah.
They received.
So then I'm asking to table it, do we need to defeat? So then I'm asking to table it. Do we need to defeat this motion and then, or can we table it?
We can just, let's receive it and then we can just do the motion.
Okay, Alan?
Just the point, we receive it and also refer it to staff. But then staff can decide. When we've had this discussion, the economic community would make sense to me to refer it back there where the mayor is there and then we could go forward with a report back to council and stuff.
Counselor Brothers?
But on that point, Alan, are, do we have another meeting if not?
Yeah, we do it before the next council meeting. Yeah, so we can get the report back.
Great.
Okay. Then we will, all in favor of receiving this letter and then all in favor? Opposed? And then we'll defer back to staff. More information at the next meeting? Yep.
Someone needs to make that motion?
Someone needs to make that?
We don't have the motion.
All right, Communications, A, Economic Development Committee Minutes. B, Economic Development Commission Minutes. C, Committee to Approve Public Events Minutes. D, Wildland Fire Protection Committee Minutes. E, Park Recreation Culture Committee Meeting Minutes. F, RCMP Community Policing Report. All right, we have a motion to go into camera. Oh, yeah, sorry. The press?
Yes, go skip.
Good mistake.
I have a question for you. You're acting worshipfulness. That is with regards to the story that appeared on CBC yesterday?
Yeah.
That 57 rail cars were left unattended and unsecured by, by handbrakes on the rail above Revelstoke. Does City Council have any concerns about this kind of practice by CP Rail and its failure in meetings with council over this, over this spring to, to reveal that?
Yeah, for sure. And then also Rob's talk. How many times have you talked to the press with this?
In about 20 minutes, it will be eight.
Okay, yeah. So maybe Rob can speak to it. Like, we have concerns, obviously, but what was our, what were you saying to the press before? We can relay that to David.
Yeah, basically, it is concerning for the community, concerning for the fire department, and certainly concerning for the emergency program. The matter is still under investigation and I'm sure council and the fire department and that community will want to know the results of that investigation and see where things will be moving forward from there.
Thank you very much.
Alex?
I don't have any questions.
Making it easy on me. Goodness, while I just diverted the rocks. Motion to the camera. Counselor Brothers?